Let's call this meeting to order of the school board for the school district of the city of Dearborn, a regular meeting for Monday, September 10th, starting at 7:00?
7:05.
7:05. First item, please.
Roll call. Hussein Berry, here. Fadwa Hamood.
She is out of town.
She is out of town, thank you. Mary Lane.
Here.
Cillian Astor.
Here.
Mary Pacheco.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Mead. Here. Next item?
Next items. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Ridwan Awad, the principal of Miller Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Good evening, President Mead.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Mead's trustees.
We have Lillian DeBaja and Malak Hamood, second grade dynamic duo from Miller Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow.
Nice and loud articulation.
Ms. Hamood, which, is that you?
Wonderful, yes.
Is that your certificate?
Lovely pair of red ones.
Nice job, girls. Nice and loud.
Yes, you did a great job.
Good job, ladies.
Wonderful.
Good to see you.
Next item, please.
Superintendent's update. Agenda items?
Okay, so on agenda, good evening, everyone. I have two retirements that I want to mention. Margaret Ferris, over 18 years of service, and Darlene Paralocas, over 21 years of service. If we could share our appreciation for them and thank them by... And again, we thank them for the years of service and congratulate them. That's it for agenda items.
Next item?
Nine agenda items.
So I have a few things here. Tomorrow is September 11th, and of course, our schools will take just a moment to remember those who lost their life 17 years ago during the attacks on the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and Pennsylvania. Our flags will be lowered to have staff in recognition of what is now called Patriot's Day. We, as a district, remember all the victims who lost their life on that terrible day. We mourn their loss and honor their memory. We also take this time as an opportunity to thank all of our first responders and those who put themselves in harm's way to ensure our safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna now call up Mr. Carl Weiss to speak an update on the infrastructure committee that's been ongoing. Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Pleasure to be here.
Or Doc... Oh, Mr., yes, Mr. Weiss.
It's okay. It's Mr. So this will be our second update. At this point in time, we've had three meetings. Last time I was here, we had two meetings. Focus of our third meeting, well, of course, I say that, I just wanna tell you something that I omitted last time. Each meeting concludes with a kind of a closure activity where we have some table talk and we ask all the participants to answer two questions. Tell us three things that you learned this evening, and what's one question that you have, something you would like to know more about. That closing activity becomes the beginning activity for the subsequent meeting, and the administrative team here at Dearborn Public, especially Tom Wall, answers the questions that they ask, so they get answers. And I'm happy to report, I've had good things to say about the task force before, I still do. They've done a very good job. The third meeting was just last week, and we focused on really three things. We asked the task force teams to develop a list of wants for the district and needs for the district. The one restriction is those wants and needs were confined to the four areas that fall under the charge of the task force. That would include campus safety and security, infrastructure, capacity, and air conditioning. Those are the big questions that we've asked them to look at. Each table compiled a list. We then consolidated the list. Unfortunately, at the last meeting, we ran out of time before we got a chance to really discuss and unpack that list, because the second thing that we did at that meeting was we talked about the options for ballot proposals. Recall that at the second meeting, Mr. Wall gave us kind of school finance 101 and also talked about the millage options that the district was considering. So the question, the issue at the third meeting was just to discuss those options and get a little beginning for the feeling of where people, what people thought about those millage options. Were they looking for an increase? Were they looking for cash neutral? Those types of things. So then the last thing that ended up taking a little more time than we thought at the meeting was a four corners activity. The tables were grouped in one of four groups, and they heard from experts from the district administration on each of those four areas, again, safety and security, infrastructure, district capacity and capacity needs, and then finally, air conditioning. Each, at each corner, the district administrator was asked to talk a little bit about what the district needs were, about what the costs, our estimated costs were of the district needs, and then also spend the last five minutes answering questions that people on the task force have. We got very good feedback from that session that went very well, and that's where we left off. And then our next meeting is going to be on September 26th, and that's going to be a building tour. We're going to meet over at Lowry. We've got two buses scheduled, and each bus will visit several schools. It'll give the task force members an opportunity to really experience the differences in buildings. They'll be looking at buildings that are old and very needy in terms of repairs, as well as some districts that have either renovated or newer buildings that have more facilities. So they'll experience that. Our hope is that, you know, seeing and smelling and touching those buildings will make the big lists that they have developed real, and then we'll continue our discussion around building consensus on the list at the fifth meeting, which will be the week after October 3rd, while the trip was freshening everybody's mind. That concludes my report for tonight.
Yes?
I just wanna know, I know you've only had three meetings so far, but has the participation stayed pretty steady with who you began with and who is still attending?
Yes. I would say 75% of participants have been in all three meetings, and we understood, you know...
Every once in a while, right. You're gonna...
People have lives, and they can't make every meeting, but the participation's been very good in that regard.
Yeah, I just...
Between 25 and 30 people show up every time.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we still continue to have a strong representation of different people to hear everything all the way through.
Yes, and actually, Tom Wall provided, there was a group of about six people that hadn't made the first two meetings who were invited to come early at the last meeting so he could catch them up a little bit, too.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I just wanna say, appreciate the work of the committee, and it is an enormous task within a tight timeframe, so we appreciate all of those on the committee and you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
And so I still have a few things more on my commentary. First day of school...
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. So obviously, we had our first day, first week, two weeks of school. We started a little earlier this year. It was very exciting. I was able to get to every building. That includes operations and transportation. You know, we value all of our staff, and I was able to get an Instagram photo from every location, and they were waiting for me to come and get the next one with the sign, so they are there, and I know it was a great couple of weeks, so I'm gonna, we're gonna play a little quick video presentation right now.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Turn and face the flag. We're gonna get our morning started. Those students that have not found their class schedule, don't forget to go inside.
Take a picture of me.
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 Well, I thank Eric and Jacob for putting that together, and again, you know I don't hesitate getting into character. Ms. Stanley asked me with the minions. My kids love minions, so... All right, so just moving along, I just wanna mention here that, you know, we've worked really hard to build many positive relationships with members of the media. We respect the freedom of the press and the role in keeping the community informed. With that said, I would like to address a recent article that appeared in the Press and Guide that contains inaccurate information, and I feel is based more on the opinion of a single individual as opposed to the facts of the situation. Today, we will hear from members of our community who support our efforts, including the president of the DFSE, the union who represents our outstanding food service staff members, and two parents who are also members of the PTA. I would ask right now if Al Larini, Carmen Bronson, Donna Stanley, and Tom Wall could come forward, please? Thank you. I'm gonna finish my statement, and I'm gonna turn it over to them. So the article states that the district is acting against state laws. Totally inaccurate. We currently have upper management that are employees of our Dearborn Schools. We're not looking to change a company because we currently do not have one. Instead, we are looking to bring in a food service company to help us enhance our options for students. We stated this several times in writing and at board, excuse me, at board meetings, that we are not privatizing, as we will maintain our employees in the food service operations, and no one is losing a job as a result of this request for proposal. However, what we are going to do through one of the potential companies that would be awarded the bid is to hire a chef, nutritionist, and other administrative personnel to improve choice, healthy options, and meals for students. We are governed by state law and must comply with all requirements by the Michigan Department of Education. We are in compliance. The federal government establishes recommended guidelines for the state officials regarding the bidding process. Many of the USDA guidelines that are established by the federal government are recommendations. You cannot be in violation of law when there are only recommendations. Again, we follow what the Michigan Department of Education requires to do, and without their approval, we've had their approval every step of the way, we cannot move forward. We are doing this to help our students, and it was a student-led initiative. We listen to our students. We also listen to our parents. We have been very transparent during this entire process. We have mentioned this publicly at several board meetings and discussed the need to enhance our food services and offer healthier options. This started publicly when I presented in April of 2017. If there are members of the community with questions or have concerns with the RFP process, as alleged in the article, I welcome them to identify themselves rather than remaining anonymous. We are willing to meet and directly address questions or concerns. We have always and will continue to welcome open, constructive dialogue with our community. Our motives are clear. We are working to enhance our food service program while maintaining current and future staff, all in an effort to provide our students with additional healthy options and a greater variety of food items. I have no idea what the motives are of the anonymous community members. Now, I will turn it over to the Dearborn Federation of Schools employee, President Al Larini.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Al Larini, and I represent the Dearborn Federation of School Employees. Those are the non-instructional employees that do the things in the district like drive buses and work in the kitchens and maintenance, and I'm here to tell you today that we've had a continuing dialogue with the superintendent about bringing in a management company. The superintendent approached us back in the spring of last year. So we've had this year-long discussion, and as part of that discussion, we were able to go on a couple of tours to look at what's happening in a couple of schools that do have a management-style company, and I have to tell you, it's quite impressive, and it's something that we all ought to consider. Obviously, we all, we all are striving for excellence, and excellence, the ideas for excellence can come from many different, many different parts. I was very, very impressed in what I saw. Excuse me. We also wanna reiterate to the board and to the community that our union, we do not feel the fear of privatization. We are looking at this as a, another idea, something that will make our district better. And so we have no, we have no fears of a company coming in and taking our jobs, and as evidence of that, this last contract that we've just agreed upon, and I wanna thank all of you and the community at large for that contract and for putting that kind of faith in our group for a five-year agreement, but we ratified this contract 99 to 2. And I like to tell people that we ratified it unanimously, that the two votes were mistakes. They were just misread, and had I been able to help them, we would've had unanimous vote. But I think it's important for you to understand that we have a great deal of trust in this administration, in this board, in this community, and I think you have the same for us. Otherwise, you wouldn't have offered us this kind of agreement. And so I have to say, I look forward to this exploration as a first step in coming up with some really, really good ideas, and we've got a very collaborative relationship. And so some of the ideas will come from outside, and some of the ideas will come from inside, but I'm certain that we are gonna have the best, most unique program around. And once again, I just wanna thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now I'll ask Ms. Bronson and Stanley to come up, parents who have been involved with the committee.
Yes. Dr. Maleko approached us... There you go. Sorry, I'm short. Dr. Maleko approached us at our board meeting. He always has himself or a representative come, and so he keeps us abreast of everything that's going on within the district, which we appreciate as a PTA council and PTA members. When he brought up that the students wanted better food and parents were complaining about the food, we totally agreed. We chose to join the committee not only as PTA members, but very active members in the school, in the school community, and being noon hours. We were both noon hours in the elementary school. So we actually saw firsthand how much food was being wasted, how the kids weren't really liking what was served. So I was very happy to join the committee, and I was very, very impressed with what we did see. If, it takes a while. I know that each school that we saw, it, you know, they did tell us it takes quite a while to get to where they were, but very impressive. They had grab-and-gos for kids, so those that have any kind of sports activities after school, they can maybe grab some fruit, a yogurt, or something like that, because now kids eat at 10:30, high school eats at 10:30, and if they have a game or something after school, they're not eating anything in between the games. So that was a nice feature that we saw in the schools as well. We were just impressed. We got to taste the food. We liked the way the food tasted. It was delicious, and just overall, very impressed, and it's been an open conversation about the whole process. Sorry, did you have something to say?
No, I haven't. I can't say anything.
I will say, talking to some of the students at the schools and talking to the employees and talking to people, everything was all positive feedback. Everything we got was positive. There was nothing negative. Everybody liked everything about it, and now having a high schooler who plays sports, I see the struggle that they're in, and I see it, and it would just work out great for our district.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your involvement and on the committee. I appreciate your statements. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Wall to talk, but thank you again and appreciate the union. I also wanna say, we appreciate the great work that our current staff does within the food service department. They really do. What we wanna do is bring in additional resources to help enhance that, so...
It's one of the students' best part of the day. It's lunchtime. They come out to get back with friends they might not have in their classroom, so it's an important part of the day. We wanna make sure we keep throwing that program. I just wanna talk briefly. We had some information that came through from MDE this week. They gave us their direct certification rates by school, and that's what generates how much of, we looked at the community eligibility provision, which is CEP for short, is how much we can potentially offer kids without going through the form process. And if you remember, last year around this time, we got 14 schools that were able to get free lunch and breakfast, and Mr. Berry, you know, had us look at it back in the summertime. Can we offer that to everybody? And unfortunately, at that time, if we did it to everybody at that same percentage, it'd be roughly about over a million dollars of cost to the district to actually offer it free. Well, the state came out with their direct certification rates this week, and Mrs. Alda Bailey and myself were able to look at it, and we were able to actually extend the number of schools to actually all schools this year. So that's a good program for kids. Now, it has some drawbacks. As you know, if we don't go through the actual forms for free and produced applications, then that might have an impact in our Title I funding. So when that happens, we have to go through a voluntary survey to still get that information, because the federal government doesn't look at our direct cert program to actually fund our federal program. So that's an issue that Mrs. Alda Bailey is gonna be working with principals to make sure we can do this. And just remember, when we say free lunch and breakfast for students, it does not mean everything's free. So if a student buys an additional milk, buys a second lunch, buys a cookie, those things are still chargeable as just for the lunch. So we gotta make sure students understand what a free lunch is and what it accounts for, because there will be times where they're gonna go off-menu and get that extra bag of chips, or I've seen at the high school, my son sometimes, two bags of chips and a milk, you know, that doesn't constitute a lunch, so he would actually still be charged for that. So when we looked at the MDE, we went through them, and when they looked at that, for our last year, for 14 schools, they found a significant increase in participation. So going to CEP programs did increase participation in the buildings considerably for those 14. So if we extrapolate that out to all buildings, we could see a significant increase in the participation for all schools, and with that to happen, it could significantly change the financial model that we're currently working under. So another side effect to this, or unintended consequence, is for the RFP process that we're going through right now, it's gonna significantly change the financial model, and we worked with MDE this week also to look at that, and they are recommending to take the current RFP program and rebid the whole process, just because of significant dollar values involved.
Trustee, let's call...
Well, let, trustee Nasser had her hand up first.
Can you specify what constitutes for a free lunch?
Yeah, usually there's five components, and Mr. Murphy's here, and he can probably get into much more detail, but there's five components. They have to eat three of those fries, five. So it might be a bread, a fruit, you know, a grain, protein. I'm sure, if you wanna exact one, I can let Mr. Murphy...
Yeah, why don't you let him come up? And I wanna, as he's coming up, just stress one thing, too, that we're not, the rebidding has nothing to do with what I just stated about the article. We are in compliance with MDE. This just has to do with this new information because it changes the financials.
Yeah, the MDE controls the whole process, even what kind of model we bid. They actually review, and eventually, if we got to a recommendation, they would have to review the recommendation and come to the same criteria.
If I can just add, good evening, everyone. Medicaid was something that was added to this direct certification, so that families on Medicaid were now part of this, which is what increased significantly the numbers.
Is that like the My Healthy Michigan Plan 2, because they have Medicaid as two components now, I guess with the...
You know, I'm not certain.
Obamacare, yeah. I would assume it was, because they have. That's one of the increases in the population's new healthcare.
Yeah, that would be another administrator, somebody that would have to actually answer that one, the components.
Of the meal.
Yeah, there's five components. You know, it's milk, vegetable, fruit, protein, and I'm, I'm...
Grain.
Grain, thank you. And of those five, three have to be selected for a meal. One of those three need to be a fruit or vegetable in order for it to be reimbursable. Yes.
Trustee, let's call...
Okay. So, so if I'm understanding this right, could it complicate things if all of the students, now I, I don't know what's going to come out of the RFP in a new bid, but if it, I'm assuming we're going to, they're gonna have to qualify in what they're going to be suggested offerings, and I don't know whether, does the state have a, you know, what if they come over and budget with how much their fruit and vegetable component is costing, number one? That's my first question. Number two is, if we have an inordinate amount of students who are not selecting those, I mean, are we just gonna throw it on their tray and say, hey, you gotta take it, so that we can get reimbursed, regardless of whether they're eating it or not?
Well, just, once again, it's called offer versus serve as far as selecting the three components. So in order for us to be reimbursed for that food, it's gotta be... So in order for us to be reimbursed for that food, it's gotta be at least three of those components. I don't know if that's answered yet.
Well, no, 'cause then how do we make sure that the students are selecting those?
So when they says offer versus serve, they'll have all the components on the line, or majority of the components on the line, and they have to choose which one they want of those five.
So it doesn't matter which of those.
Right, so we're not gonna say.
So we'll just make sure that's all they have to select from in the first place?
Right. And then we might have, depending on how that's all gonna work, you know, this is new stuff. The menu planning goes out a month ahead of time, and they have to meet some nutritional requirements as part of the, this national school lunch program. So we'll have to look at that and make sure we have the capability of them to get through the lines for the free lunch, and maybe have some additional lines for a la carte items if they want to come up and just get additional milk and things like that. So we gotta still kind of plan it all together.
Okay, so then the other thing is, do we have to make sure in the RFP that they're at a certain price range, so that they're not coming in high on certain components that we're required to have?
Well, that's all part of the RFP process. There is a mandatory minimum price we have to have for lunch, and they don't look as much as the price as the quantity of food being offered. That's how they look at it. So when you bid out the RFP, there's the, uh, equivalent meal number that they look for participation, that's what they bid on that number. So everybody's bidding on the same participation.
So it's more like a bulk kind of.
Correct.
Thing, rather than the, the quality of it?
Correct.
Okay. So then the last thing about the Title I, potential fallout. Will, you have that available for us, too, once we get to that point?
Yeah, Mrs. Alda Bailey is gonna be working with the principals starting tomorrow to look at that, 'cause obviously, when we have, like, open houses and things like that, it's a good time to reach a large group. There will have to be correspondence sent home to families to make sure they're aware what the program is. So we're gonna start generating that, but I just want to give the board first look at it to let them know that it's good for kids, so all these hoops and, and hurdles we'll have to get through to get the program going.
Can anyone's school knock us out of the deal?
No, once, once the, sorry, I didn't mean to push you. But once the determination is made, the program is good for five years. So we don't have to actually go back and recalculate it, it's good for five years.
Trustee Lane?
So, we are, we have been determined to be eligible.
Correct. Yeah, we have to actually.
So that means, like, simply put, rather than in technical language, free lunch for everybody?
Correct. We have to fill out the paperwork for the national school lunch program, which we did in the summer with the old percentages, but we'll have to reapply, and the M.D.'s ready for us.
So, no free lunches tomorrow. I saw some of the Edsel kids reacting to that, so.
Not yet.
Not yet, I guess.
Soon, we'll be sending an email out to.
But, seriously, this is like free lunch for everybody? That's awesome.
And, and, after-school lunches.
Wow, that's.
Snacks.
That's really terrific.
And, and breakfast?
Breakfast, lunch, and after-school snacks.
Wonderful.
And what is the approximate?
Timeline.
Timeline.
Well, here's, uh, once we go through the application process and making sure that we complete it fully, uh, they said they can retroactive, uh, it'll be retroactive to the beginning of the school year. So any meal that we've already, uh, sold can be.
So we are reimbursed?
Can be reimbursed for that, yes.
Which means a lot of logistics on the accounting side of giving parents back their money and their.
I was gonna say, how are we gonna, yeah.
It's, it's, it's a little complicated to kind of get through. It'd be nice if we'd known this over the summer, the state gave us those numbers earlier, but, you know, we're working with what we have. So at some point, we'll have to make, say, all right, now, going forward, that all lunches are free and reduced, and we'll, we'll have to work through that pretty quickly.
Trustee Thor? My question was already answered.
Thank you. Dr. Mead.
Uh, trustee Berry?
So, yeah, it's, it's a huge benefit, and I really appreciate it.
And we've been with, working with M.D. since probably April of last year, all along the way, making sure we've been in compliance all the way. You know, unfortunately, it was, things change, you know, there's some things you can't do, so that's why we're gonna have to redo the RFP process. Not that we're gonna go away from that, but to make sure everyone's on the same playing field, we have to go through that process again.
Trustee Thor?
So if I'm thinking through this in my head, I'd start to think, as a parent, why send the kids to school with a lunch anymore if I know they can get a free lunch at school? If that's happening with a lot of families, you're gonna increase the number of kids needing a lunch. Do we have the capacity to have so many more kids than we might have ever had in the past? Be able to get them through the lines in time so they can still eat their food before they have to get back to class?
And that'll be a nice problem to, to solve, until we get to that point. Uh, but we'll, we'll work along with, uh, the administration at each school and, and be sure to, to handle it.
Trustee Berry?
On that point, what I'm thinking is, you could probably get them through the line faster. They don't have to stop at the cashier and look for names or what have you.
Well, there's still a process.
I'm sure, yeah, there is a process, but.
Sure. But you're right. Yeah, it will go faster.
Trustee Lane?
Uh, back to the previous conversation about the RFP. I, I did want to note, um, I said before, I don't think there was any malfeasance, and I don't think there was ever, ever any intent to, certainly not on our part, to displace our employees. Uh, no, absolutely not. But also, I, I would like to say that we've been working on this not only for a couple of years, but also, it's not just Dearborn Schools that have been working on this trend. When I was reading about the meeting tomorrow, uh, with the Declaration of Year of Health for Dearborn, the city has been involved. I know the Lebanese-American Heritage Club, uh, Access, uh, and other agencies. So, uh, it's not only Dearborn Schools, um, and if, if there are allegations, I personally ask anyone to come forward and bring something real and substantial, because I, I don't believe it was there. So I think our, our policy was good, our intentions were good, and our actual implementation was also. Mr. Wall, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lane. Well said. Anything else?
Nope, I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Great, come back soon and tell us it's on.
Just a couple of quick things, responses that I owe you, just updates for the board. Uh, we did have some discussion on, we, uh, was mentioned, and, uh, Dr. Mead, you kind of directed me to look at for Brian Wiston and recognition, so we have some discussions going on with Cabinet, and we're thinking of something here at this building potentially. And then with Imad Fadallah, there, it's actually students, and at the school level, they're leading the way, but they have some ideas that they've been working on at, at Stout and, um, at Fortson, and, uh, Mr. Mashur has been involved with that, working with the principal. So more to come on those areas, but there is some progress. Uh, other update is college and career readiness presentation. We're gonna have that in October as requested, and then there'll be a transportation presentation as requested. And we did put in the request for information section of the briefs, just last time, we did the, we did a report about three years ago, trustee Berry.
I saw that.
So we put that in there, but we're gonna have updated, but we just need a little more time, given the start of school, but we're gonna have the team in there, and so I just wanted to get, uh, everyone apprised of those things. Thank you. All right, you're welcome. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. Something I'm looking forward to, the musical performance by Edsel Ford Marching Band.
We're gonna call it Ms. Meyer, who does a great job in the district, and we appreciate the work you do, Ms. Meyer.
Thank you. Good evening. This past summer, I was at Edsel Ford during their band camp, and I happened to sit in on a rehearsal, and I found myself smiling and tapping my toes. And at that point, I turned to the director and said, um, we need to bring this to a board meeting, to the school board. Sarah Orin is the director at, um, Edsel Ford High School. She has been with us for three years, and in that short time, she has had her students participate in the Michigan School Band and Orchestra, solo and ensemble festivals, the band and orchestra festivals. She's competed in marching band festivals, as well as performed in the pit for the musicals at Edsel Ford. Last year, the, the group was undefeated at their scholastic ba, marching band competitions, winning captions in best percussion, best music, and best general effect. Get ready to enjoy. It don't mean a thing if it ain't got that swing. And sing, 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 performed by the Edsel Ford High School Marching Band.
All right.
Thank you again for letting them, thank you again for letting them come and perform for you, the Edsel Ford Marching Band.
One more recognition.
I have to say, I love the music, but I also love the animation of the band, and I particularly like the animation of the director.